Okay. Cool.
Really.
Alright.
This should be good. More than anybody.
Eighteen, well, here, thank you. Alright. Evening, everybody. Town of Dayton zoning board appeals regular meeting slash public hearing Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, 7:00 PM here at the primetime building, 10:59 Somerset Ave, Dayton, Mass. 02715. Just so everyone knows, this is a public meeting. It's being video and audio recorded for a clear broadcast. And just so you know, this agenda is subject to revisions and additions up until meeting time. However, we have it stamped in July 21st for this agenda and signed by the clerk. So if we could just all arise for the pleasure of the meeting.
To the light of the United States of America. This is our charter stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So just to everyone where I, um. My, my, uh, Craig Logan is not here today. He's out. I don't know that camera. Uh, so we have, so he's the vice chair. I'm Zach Akon, the chair. I'm the young clerk, and we have members of Sue, Dave, you have Elise. And Margaret is also here today for our town council. So we'll go right into the first item on the agenda, which is to review, discuss an act, Owen Kelly, uh, Stonebridge Homes for Stony Bridge Estates' release of the bond. And I know there's been a lot of communication back and forth. Um, the applicant can go first if they can, they want to be offered there or they have, of course. Um. No, I think, I think probably best with Margaret. They've, uh, I've been working for quite a while to, if the, uh, go through all of the conditions. I've got, put together a little summary of the items remaining. Margaret will plain detail her opinion on some of those items. The question, the big question going forward right now is about, uh, seeing her acceptance. Is a little bit of a question of which items can be opened as the, this item goes on to the warrant? I'm just getting things from the board and. Let's go. Alright. Margaret, whenever you're ready, if anything you might have to touch on specifically?
So I have been in touch with Mr. Kelly several times since our last meeting. Uh, we have had a spreadsheet, as you've seen, that have sort of identified the conditions where I felt whether they've been complied with or not, if he did, we have a chance to review that multiple times as he's provided me and the board information on that. As we've addressed things that I felt had been complied with or needed further adjustments. Um, I also spent some time at the request of the board addressing and researching some questions that the homeowners association had raised, um, and I submitted a letter to the board yesterday answering those three questions. Um, I don't know if you want me to just summarize my letter. It's a rather lengthy letter, um.
Sure, that's fine. I guess if there's anything that they, that the residents have questions on, um, they can ask whenever, whenever you're done.
Sure. Um, so there were three general questions that it was my understanding I was being asked to research by the board. Um, so the first was whether or not there had been a violation of condition 65 when there was that transfer of the trustees from that of the developer-based trustees to the homeowner-based trustees. And condition 65 is the one that provides a relevant part that there needs to be essentially ZVA approval of any transfers of a comprehensive permit. So based on my research that I did, review of the file, review of all the documents, um, I concluded that that was, that transfer was not a violation of this condition. That as far as I'm concerned, the comprehensive permit remains in the name of Stony Bridge Estates LLC, who is the applicant. That, um, the comprehensive permit, as you all probably may know, or remember, or learning about, through your process of learning about 40B, um, they have to, comprehensive permits have to, uh, be issued to people that have certain elements or, um, requirements, the preconditions that they're meeting, one of which is that they have to be a limited dividend organization. And Stony Bridge LLC was found to be a limited dividend organization by the zoning board at the time the comprehensive permit was issued. The homeowners association is not, doesn't meet that definition within the law, which I explained further detail in my letter. Um, so it's not even capable of actually having, um, the ability to hold this one. And it's, there's another matter that the board has been dealing with recently that is looking to transfer the permit. Um, and it's looking to, it's creating that as a modification request before you. And we, the board has been inquiring about whether or not that limited dividend organization status actually applies to the new transfer, which is the appropriate process that you would go through. So I don't feel that there has been a transfer. I don't think the homeowners association is capable of, um, of actually holding, being a permit holder in this case. But I also wanted to be clear that the homeowners association is bound by the comprehensive permit, which it is. It's bound by that through some of the language of the conditions, through some of the language of the declaration of trust establishing homeowners association. Um, and I also felt that the process of making the transfer from that of the developer trustees to the homeowners association trustees, as far as I can tell from both the comprehensive permit conditions and the declaration trust language, the only precondition to that occurring was that it happened after the last lot had been sold. And that, as far as I know, is when it occurred. So I don't think that it was improperly transferred. I don't think that it violated this particular condition. I don't think it needed zoning board approval in order to happen. In fact, I think it occurred in accordance with the way it was envisioned to occur. That was the first question I was asked to look at. The second one is whether or not I felt that the request to have the roadways approved as public ways needed to be made by the applicant under the terms and the language of condition 80. And my conclusion on that, um, is that yes, I do believe condition 80 does require the applicant to request that. Um, given the way that the wording of that condition references the same, only the applicant, and other conditions very clearly talked about the applicant and then superseded by the homeowners association for the applicant and jointly with the homeowners association, that type of language stood clear in condition 80. Condition 80 talked about the applicant. That being said, I also wanted to be clear that I don't think that this language in condition 80 would preclude another entity from asking for acceptance of the roadway. So it's not to say that the town couldn't, for instance, if the homeowners association wanted to request the roadway to be a public way. The town is not prohibited from having that request come before because it came from the homeowners association, not the applicant. I also know that, you know, the acceptance of the roadways as a public way was something that was envisioned as being requested, but certainly the zoning board and the developer had no authority to speak to the town, required that to happen. So there is always a chance that it's denied. If it were to be denied, I don't think the applicant has the obligation to ask again. I think at that point in time, certainly somebody else could raise that. There's no obligation on the applicant. The applicant does have an obligation to ask. Under condition 80, another entity could also ask, another entity could ask again. And I don't think the applicant has to ask again. And where I was on that one. And then the third question was whether or not, um, the inspections of the stormwater management basins and the reporting on that have been violated. Um, and if so, if it was a violation, what options are available to the board? So I spent some time working with Mr. Kelly to review a lot of documents. He actually added an additional document to me today that was provided to me after this letter, so I'm going to slightly amend some of my response in the letter based on what I reviewed of that document. There is an operation and maintenance plan that was created as a draft to the comprehensive permit. It was exhibit D, it was a comprehensive permit. It was part of condition 23. Um, and so that document Mr. Kelly today provided me with the final version, actually he reminded me that final version was part of the plan set, the final plan set that was approved by the board before construction began. Um, and I reviewed that, blew it up so I could read it. It was very consistent with the draft that the zoning board had had. The additional language actually just required additional, um, pumping of the basins um, after 72-hour event, storm event. Um, so it seemed appropriate whatever additions were made into it. And, um, and so I do feel that, that there was an inspection obligation and it was very clear that the inspection of the stormwater management basins, once they occurred, the reports were supposed to be generated and filed with the board of health and zoning board. I do not have any reason to think that the inspections did not occur. I know that the developers had engineers out on the site. We have had, the towns had consulting engineers on the site. I think the inspections were occurring as needed. The final inspection report that you just received indicated that basin is operating properly. But what hasn't been done is the reports have not been provided to the town. And I explained that, you know, at this stage, you can't recreate reports that didn't exist previously. It's just not feasible to do. So what options are available to the board? Well, there's a condition in the, in the comprehensive permit decision that says the board could go in and cure this and then charge the developer for that cost if there's a violation of anything related to the operation and maintenance of the stormwater management system. But again, the board can't go in and cure the existence, the creation of reports. So that's not going to work. So the only other options really are these, this idea of what's available at law or equity to the board in general, when there's been a violation of any type of permit or there's been a violation of a rule or regulation or bylaw in the town. Um, and so there's various options that are available at law or equity. You know, the zoning board has the ability to withhold issuance of approvals. The zoning enforcement agents has an issue, or the building inspector has the ability to withhold the issuance of permits, subsequent permits. In some cases, depending on the type of violation, if it relates to a rule, regulation, bylaw, of the town, then there's, the town has adopted the non-criminal disposition process where they could provide a notice to the permit holder that they, you're in violation of the rule and regulation. And if they don't correct it, that they have, they are charged a nominal sum daily until that correction is done. Um, and then there's this equitable way to resolve it. And so equity means something that makes sense. You know, what can you to agree to? And in my case, I feel that the developer is certainly, um, at an advantage financially by not having had to expend the cost of having these reports. Again, only the reports, not the inspection, but the reports created over, over time. Um, and so there's a financial win, windfall, I guess, that exists with the developer that otherwise would have been expended upon to relate to an affordable housing purpose. And perhaps there could be some type of proposal by the developer that the town zoning board would be willing to accept that can be used either financially or something else for affordable housing purposes. Again, I remind you that this is a an agreement and a right that exists with the town, not with a private entity. Private entities can certainly pursue whatever rights that may exist privately, you know, private legal force of action, but the town has the right to require a developer to, um, to create an equitable agreement with them. And in this case, it should be tied to using any additional funding that they may get for affordable housing purposes. You have an affordable housing trust fund that exists in this town. A time to town is negotiated with developers for some type of contribution to that in the course of issuing a comprehensive permit or a modification, et cetera. That's something that could be done. My suggestion here is that the developer provide, provide a proposal to you, which I'm hoping he will do at some point in time, if not tonight. That you listen to that, you think about it, and you negotiate with him, and you create an agreement before you issue final approval on this case. Um, the slight adjustment to my letter is that in the, my review of this file stormwater operation and maintenance plan, I was reminded that this, the recording obligation for, I inadvertently said it was only a biannual inspection plus 72-hour storm events for. There were a few other times that it was required. Um, during construction, however, it was a monthly inspection obligation and a monthly reporting obligation to the board. So you're going to need to confirm kind of how many reports were missed, what the general cost of a report is, which is, I did check with Peter Williams. I'm thinking it's in the few hundred dollar range. Multiply that by the amount of reports that were missed and come up with a dollar figure that you can, you can do it that way, or you can come up with some other solution. But my recommendation to the board is you go the equitable route here. Obviously, you're withholding final approval. That's another option that you have right now, but that's how I would suggest you respond.
And the, may I remind you that we're coming from that, that can't be put towards this within a project. I just went into a general.
I mean, it's hard to put it towards this specific project at this point in time because the project's fully constructed.
The only thing that just came across my mind was when, a few days ago, the board, uh, sorry, the homeowners association mentioned having to actually go through another winter of paying for snow removal.
Right, but that's an obligation of a private entity.
Okay, that's what I was.
Like, I could see something where maybe you could have an amenity added to the development, but I don't think that paying for snow removal for an individual homeowners association
That would.
really meets that threshold. I understand that that's probably what everyone in this room wants to hear right now, but I just don't feel that that falls within the realm of what the zoning board of appeals has, has the authority to do. Um.
I, I didn't think it would, but I just, I kind of, not, not forgotten about it, but I assumed that wasn't going to be an option until you mentioned that, that fourth one there, and I was like, well, that could apply, but.
Right. I mean, an amenity, constructing an amenity equal to that amount, like if there's something around, you know, uh, the recre, the passive recreation area or something else that, um, so that's why, yeah, this development is constructed. I think easily you could ask that it just simply go into the town's affordable housing trust fund to be used for affordable housing purposes in general um, at this stage. So that, my suggestion is that you let the developer make a proposal, that you figure out a solution with the developer before you finalize your approval on that. Um, so that's where I was on those three legal questions. I had also been reviewing several of the other conditions that sort of remained open. Um, and I received a good number of documents related to the funding. I know there's been a lot of conversation around the funding of the various reserve accounts related to the stormwater management system. Um, so funding did occur. Um, I don't necessarily know when, but at prior to the, the homeowner trustees taking over, there were sort of line items created um, within the, and I received, I was shown a balance sheet um, that had line items that were created addressing the three types of accounts that were needed. One was a emergency pumping account for the two basins. It was funded in the amount of $500. Another was sort of the, um, reserve account that was supposed to be for repair, the reserve and repair account. That amount was funded at $6,500. And then there was kind of this ongoing capital improvement account. Um, sorry, let me get you the names of these three accounts. So there was a repair and replacement account that was funded in the amount of $6,500. And a capital reserve account that was funded in the amount of $6,500. This amount, I don't know if that was the initial funding, but that's how much existed at the time of homeowner trustees took this over. Um. So I did confirm the numbers with Peter Williams. I asked him for his opinion on whether or not these amounts sounded appropriate. I also took a look at exhibit D to the comprehensive permit, which and there's another condition in the comprehensive permit that established the obligation to have these three accounts. Um, I did indicate that I felt that the capital reserve account was properly funded. It was supposed to be funded on an analysis of a 1/30th. It's supposed to be a 30-year. The concept is that it's a 30-year account so that in 30 years after the stormwater management basin's been constructed, it can now be basically reconstructed. So you're paying that, and homeowners association has to pay that and add it to their budget on a 1/30th amount. Um. The repair replacement account was intended to be sort of this emergency account to repair the entire basin system if it failed unexpectedly prior to that 30-year period. And it was intended to be a full fund. So I think that inadvertently that got funded at the 1/30th concept as well. That's why the numbers are the same. And I indicated that to Mr. Kelly, and he agreed with my analysis and indicated to me that he will be providing appropriate funding to, to meet the obligation for a full funding. So I think it was around 12 or 15,000, something like that.
That would be what brings to us, it'd end up being 13,500.
Okay. But some of that has already been paid. So where, there's going to be whatever the balance is that's needed, and obviously I'll confirm with him as he makes that in that, that sounds appropriate. I also checked with Mr. Williams around the pumping of the basin. Uh, Mr. Kelly told me that's what they had, the $500 is what they had paid last year on both basins. Mr. Williams felt that it would be appropriate to make it $1,000 for both basins. I think it was probably due to the fact that this is supposed to be an emergency account built into the homeowners association budget. They have to, have to always be funding enough for, for an annual pumping anyways. But this is intended to be sort of an emergency account so that if you need to pump more than that annual time, you already have a backup there that's available. And so in those emergency situations, I'm sure the rates may be a little different than when you're trying to negotiate them on a handful basis. So I, Mr. Kelly has agreed that he will provide an additional $500 for that line item as well. Um. Peter Williams did feel that there should have been an additional $1,000 built into the analysis for the pumping of the basins. Um, however, even with that $1,000, uh, it changed the annual obligation for the capital reserve account from $800 to $853. And the $6,500 that existed at the time I saw that balance sheet still was over that amount. So I don't think any additional money is owed to the capital reserve account. I think the homeowners want to be aware of that, that as they're working through their budget, they really should be budgeting the capital reserve account amount at $853 and $800 annually. Thinking about that, I, it, it may not make any difference to how they're charging people, but it's just something to keep in mind. Um, and I just wanted also to make sure that the homeowners realize that once um, the final approval is issued by the board, that the obligation to do these inspections and everything else falls now to the homeowners association. The reporting obligation falls to the homeowners association. So all of this needs to be built into the budget of the homeowners association. So while we're going to make sure, I'm not comfortable signing off until I've made sure that the developer has done the things that they needed to do up until this point, it doesn't end at this stage now. It just changes over to the homeowners association to be doing that. And that's why it's helpful to get this analysis done by me, by Mr. Williams, the town's consulting engineer, so that the homeowners association feels comfortable moving forward, that the budget items that they're operating with for stormwater management system is correct, that they're, you know, using numbers that seem to work, that people feel work, are consistent with what was originally funded, and that we should hopefully maintain this system in a way that doesn't create failure and a huge expense to the homeowners unexpectedly. What we should be set. That was the intention when this was all created by the zoning board through the comprehensive permit. And that's what we're implementing at this moment.
They not need to interrupt, but is it, is he talking to Peter Williams?
No.
Not, right.
So, um, so I wanted to know, let you know that that is still an open item that we're working on. Um, I also did not, have not seen, and Mr. Kelly knows that I still need to review under one of the requirements for legal review, the final version of exhibit D. So I think he'll be working on getting me that to review. I don't expect it to look any different than the draft version, to be honest. But you do need to have a final version reviewed by me and approved. And so that's something that I've asked to be submitted. Um, and I wouldn't recommend that it look any different than the draft version because we've been operating our analysis on the draft version, so. But it does need to exist and it needs to be reviewed and approved. So I, that's something I'm still waiting on. There's also been some deed, um, restriction language that I've been looking at that, uh, has to do with the no-touch zone. There is some language in some of the deeds that are impacted by the no-touch buffer zone uh, relating to the word, include the words no-touch. I'm not really comfortable that the language used meets the condition itself. So I, nay, I still am looking into this myself, but there may be some corrective deeds that I'm going to ask the developer to issue with those homeowners that are impacted. There's about six or seven homeowners, I think, impacted in that case. The idea of this, for the zoning board was that the, um, the no-touch buffer zone was supposed to be a deed restriction. So we want the homeowners who happen to have property that falls, um, within that no-touch buffer zone to be maintaining that no-touch buffer zone as a no-touch buffer zone. And so I want to make sure that the language used actually is very clear about that. And I think one of the affordable units might have missed including any language around it. It references a plan. It's shown on the plan. I just think that we can deal with that correctly. So I'm still looking at, at, at that issue. And then there's a few other approvals that we're waiting on, but they are coming in pretty quickly at this stage. I, I think we've been having, I've been having fairly regular conversations with Mr. Kelly and emails. He's been getting information to me. I was getting things even this afternoon. I read everything, but you know, I'm reviewing that. I think that we seem to be doing a good job working together on this. I'm not really feeling comfortable to sign off on this yet, uh, because there are still some open items. Um, but I feel like we are moving forward, and even if for some reason whatever still needs to happen ends up prohibiting the ability for the road acceptance request to go on a special town meeting warrant, I strongly feel that the, the work rate, the work that's being done right now cannot slow down. Because the reality is that we need to be working this hard to get everything else tightened up so that the warrant for the annual town meeting does have this included. Um, and so I don't know. I mean, you're the zoning board. You're not the planning board. The planning board is the one who has to deal with the warrant acceptance. You only deal with whether or not you can issue final approval of the release of the bond. Um, and so I don't know what the planning boards are required. If it's possible to move forward and both, both and whole, you know, you're still working on your final approval. Your planning board's willing to take other documents that are now completed and work with that, that's up to the planning board, it's not up to you. Um, so I just, even if it can't happen right now, and I know, you know, that's the goal is to try to have this happen, I think that we can't slow down. That's really what I'm at.
It's good to see you a little more optimistic in that sense. I know the other day, the last meeting, it was looking like it would have been a long shot to get that done. So at least it's turning a little more positive that, from a whole change than what we thought, at least.
There's been a lot of work done. I think that there's still a few things that need to be finished. Um, I don't know that I don't know how quickly you can get all this done. I mean, corrective deeds, if they have to be issued, are going to take the time it takes to get in touch with the um, the homeowners, to get them to sign it, to get it reported, all those other types of things. Um. You know, and those are pieces that I don't recommend the board release your bond until you have that done, because then you don't have any control to make sure that it's done properly. And it was important to this board when it issued the comprehensive permit that says these no-touch buffer zones were maintained through a deed restriction. The language needs to be clear and proper so that there's a right of action that exists by the homeowners, for instance, that's a common area, the homeowners association, to challenge that if that's ever, you know, touched inappropriately. Um, if it's ever cleared or anything else. So we want to make sure that language is in place correctly for the zoning board releases the bond. Um. So again, it may be possible that the road acceptance can proceed. I don't know if it can. That's up to the planning board. You're only being asked to address whether or not you're willing to approve this and release the remaining bond.
Mr. Chairman, just before you say anything else, I just want to remind the public and the board that for the matter of this discussion, as a member of the CBA, I am refused as a voting member. And that, um, because Mr. Logan is not here this evening. Am I correct that he, we, we need to appoint somebody in this place this evening before Mr. Kelly begins conversation or?
I don't believe so, can we not?
So actually, Mr. Logan was not a voting member.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was, and he was, okay. They're not, they're not, they're not, it's okay. Yeah, thank you. Um, I know you, usually I go to the board after, but I know a lot of you think it pertains to the homeowners. Is there anything that you felt like was not addressed or, no, no, I mean, not addressed, but anything that you want more clarification on or any other one items that you want to discuss? I mean, you, because those ones, if you have anything to, either ask of the applicant or to Margaret, do you have any questions or anything?
No, additional clarifications were extremely helpful and, and made sense for the most part. I guess I've just asked for, um, just a final clarification on condition 65. So despite that condition clearly saying that this board has to approve the transfer of that comprehensive permit from Stonebridge Homes LLC, am I reading, in my understanding of your response, Margaret, that, that approval did not need to um, take place in writing by this board?
No, my response is that I don't believe there's going to transfer of the permit.
Okay.
So there's no need, there, it wasn't even triggered.
Okay.
The permit remains right now, the Stonebridge Space LLC. That was the original permit holder. They remain the permit holder. They are identified as the applicant, the comprehensive permit, and they're still bound by the obligations now, the word applicant and the comprehensive permit.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does that at all change how the current HOA operates?
No. So that's the other piece that I wanted to look into.
Okay.
The HOA declaration of trust language, and this is where I, my, first, it's more spell out in my um, letter. But the HOA declaration of trust language very clearly says that it is incorporating certain conditions and bound by certain conditions of the comprehensive permit decision. And then the comprehensive permit decision also, in fact, it's Condition sixty-five, says that conditions this comprehensive permit, the obligations to comply with it, run with the land. So the homeowners association has deeded certain open parcels in the land. And they now have to abide by um, the comprehensive permit conditions that relate to those open parcels. Such as the stormwater management basin areas, which are on drainage lots, considered open parcels. So I wanted to kind of look at this from a big picture standpoint. That's why we, it took more time to analyze it. It wasn't as straightforward as, it seemed like it should have been when the question was asked.
But the, the letter is in a packet.
A letter was provided.
Tonight, there are any upload, if you want to go back and look at the packet, her letter, in more detail, it'll be there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you don't have the packet on the website.
Right.
Yes.
Um, yes, Chairman, yeah, since I stepped down and I am a trustee.
Yeah.
Unless.
Just one additional question, Johnson, if I could. So um, new information tonight is the five homeowners who have a no-touch buffer zone. If those homeowners have already disturbed um, that buffer zone, let's say they've cleared the land to what they believe is a property line. Is there any liability that those homeowners have, those five homeowners?
Do you want me to answer some, a little bit?
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah.
All, so, so uh, four of the five that have no-touch property um, have a reference on their deed to the no-touch. All five, uh, when they signed their home agreement, were shown the no-touch buffer zone on the property. And also all five lots are still subject to both the comprehensive permit and the plan, which references the no-touch on there. So this is an additional protection, which I'm gonna, like, I have no problem um, working towards, like, adding that additional protection. But uh, we've already had one homeowner, when they moved in, this is like five, six years ago, who stopped to put a fence on that section of property. They had to apply with the building department, the building department, but lands are no, no-touch zone, so you cannot have a fence. Uh, so that all of the language, there is language protecting those no-touch areas, and they have not been disturbed.
Okay, John.
So what I, what I want to clarify, and I don't want to, I know there are several different issues asking, and I know that the developer has, I think we all know, the ones of us who are here, but these, you know, the developer has certainly been over there, working diligently, doing several items on the, on this that they had to tick off. So first of all, thank you for doing that and doing your diligence on that. As far as the, the discussion, for example, for the roads, I'm going to focus on the roads for a minute. Because I just want to get some clarification as to what the limits are between the ZVA and the planning board. So does this, my first question, Marguerite, I'll probably sort of direct this to you. Does the ZVA, for us as homeowners, have the ability to separate out the rest of the requirements for completion of the project from the road development? And what I mean by that is, could potentially the ZVA vote as a, as a, vote to, as a condition, require the roads to, the road completion, because there's still some surfacing, resurfacing, or cracks to be filled, for example, and maybe a few other issues. Could the, could the ZVA require that that be done as a condition in order for the road acceptance component only to be then sent to the planning board for review? And the reason I'm asking for this, because we all know with the issue with coming into the winter, I was, was alluded to earlier. But if the road component for the three roads can be separated from the rest of the requirements of the ZVA, we all know that the, the bond's not going to be released yet. But in the meantime, potentially, could we move forward with the road as, but only if it's a condition that this part be completed before it goes to the meeting of the planning board? And what I'm thinking of there is whether we're not, we still, if it's brought by the developer, by the current, by the developer currently, as a request, does it still require signatures? Do we still have to get the signatures that are required, as opposed to if it were brought by us as the, as the homeowners association, or not? Because there's a, that makes a difference as to when it potentially could be brought before the planning board at their May, excuse me, at the twenty-first meeting in September or the October fourth meeting. And then separately from that, the requirement right now is that the, anything that's going to go to warrant has to be done by the twenty-fourth of September. So is there a possibility to put this on as a placeholder? If it's not met until the fourth of October, because there has to be advertising involved, and it has to be put in the paper. So I think, you know, I hope I didn't confuse anybody. So I'm trying to see if there's a way to separate this at all.
So we're seeking a little, if you don't mind me.
No, go ahead.
Answering a little bit. I've been seeking a little bit of um, answers that I have to carry. The requirements for the road, she's given out to the group of us, is sign off by the water department, sign off by the highway department, sign off by the town engineer. And then there's certain sets of documents they need, as well as the signatures uh, that they need. We need clarification on exactly how the ZVA has to weigh in on that. Uh, but if, if those are the only sign-offs they need, uh, we expect to have those all. So all that the town engineer um, have been received at this point. The water department, the highway department, and then I've provided Carrie with all the documents um, needed. So we'll need the town engineer um, who has uh, three items left, which I'll describe, as well as um, signatures. But uh, it's been informed to me that we can see the signatures now. Um, and so as soon as we have the document in front of the planning board, that gives us the language uh, for the signatures, then we're going to be going out to gather them. Um, there's nothing preventing us from bringing those to the planning board. Now, the question is, is there something else that the planning board has been considering at their meetings? Um, we, I don't know, we don't know. We have not, we haven't heard back from the planning board yet, if there's something else. However, the three items that are left on the town engineer uh, are removing the weeds from two outlet structures, uh, adding some seed to the bottom of two basins that were cleaned up, and sealing the cracks in the road. Uh, all of those items will be, will be finished before the end of the month. We've got a crack sealer scheduled. We have, and we've just been waiting for the temperature to come down, so it's seed down. Otherwise, um, nothing will come back. So my expectation will be getting the town engineer's sign-off before the end of the month. I don't know the town Titans rules more than that, but from what I've heard, it's the town, the town engineer signs off, we admit all the requirements to seek road acceptance. Now, the only thing I, thing I could picture is if there's anything else, once the town accepts the road, they own the road. Um, and I don't think any of the legal things that Marguerite have left involves a roadway itself. Um, I would guess that's going to be a question that they would ask, if there was any kind of problem with the roadway pieces. I don't think any of those items affect the roadway, they'll all be areas still owned by the homeowners association, um, and affected, controlled by the current.
And I think what I'm trying to do is find a way, through Marguerite, to find exactly what you're referring to, Owen, is, is there a way that we, not we, I should, excuse me, but the ZVA, I'm sorry, that the ZVA, through we as the residents, can request that they separate the road out and make it a condition if they were to vote tonight, can they make it a condition for the, for the, the three items, for example, that Owen mentioned, to be provided to the planning board?
Well, it's something, it's something they don't need to.
Pete, Peter Williams has issued a report uh, about three weeks ago with four items. There's one additional, which was involving some updates and aspects. He issued another report today. I, I would propose that the tent, that the ZVA could choose to accept his comments. And except that if those uh, items were complete, that um, the board would have, and with a letter from Peter Williams, that the, the ZVA would have no concerns with any of the roadway, that area defined as a roadway. So that would be my expectation. That would basically mean that Peter Williams issued a letter saying, yep, everything's good. That the ZVA would have also given that one thing on the roadway.
So if that were the case, and if that could be done, then um, I would ask through, through Marguerite, to um, I don't know if I can ask our, our admin, Seaton or not, because you're also the admin for the planning board. Are we still required to, or is anybody required, we or the developer required to get signatures? Or if it's from the developer, does it still require signatures?
You've got the warrant, you mean?
The signatures that have to go to the planning, for the planning board, and you go to the planning board.
Oh, okay.
So, so this is a zoning board meeting, obviously, and so we have to focus on what the zoning board can do. Um, I think that's certainly a hot question of homeowners association can reach out to the planning board on whether it needs to have a formal, be on an agenda for the planning board, or something the administrative system can provide guidance on to that conversation, when that can happen just during the day. Um, but that was somewhere, somewhat where I was going with this. There's nothing in Condition eighty that says that the zoning board of appeals has to release the bond fully before you can request the road to be accepted. Um, it simply says that the applicant shall request it in accordance with subdivision rules and regulations related to seeking a group of her or her plan to be accepted as a public way. If the homeowners association were to do it, they would need to follow those same rules. Those are all planning board rules, not your rules. So um, I, I guess my recommendation really would be that if this is something they can move along and do separate from seeking the, the bond release from the zoning board, there's not, no reason for them not to do that. And they can try, if this zoning board wants to establish an interim meeting before the warrant closes, in case there is some particular question that the planning board has for the zoning board. You certainly have that right, if you want to choose to do that. I don't think you have obligations to do that. But the question before you is whether or not you're willing to release the bond. In order to release the bond, there are certain things that we need to make sure are done correctly. I think that people were concerned that maybe not all that would be finished yet. I think that things were known to still be in process. I think any, any adjustments that are being needed, we're working on. I don't think things were, you know, intentionally tried to be not done and completed. I just think that we're, this is typical, this is not very typical. And asking for the roadway acceptance at this stage, to be perfectly honest, is, I mean, it's not like we're spending years here waiting for that roadway acceptance to happen. So if it can happen, great. If it can't, then annual town meeting is where it needs to happen. I think we're, there's no reason that we couldn't get there by that point in time, as long as we don't slow down now.
My only, my only reason for basically, for us as the trustees, is that to go to annual puts another year of expense on us.
Well, a winter expense, I understand that, but I mean, the development was only the one year after final build-out was only within this calendar year. So we're not, not seeing this as an, in an inordinately long period of time for us to be in this process.
Uh, I think one year after final build-out was a year ago.
May, I think of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Final build-out, the final is from the last CEO was issued.
Oh, yeah, December.
Yeah, it would have been September twenty twenty, two years ago. That was the last one that was sold at that time, so.
And, and, and we're still not seeing this as, to be, to be fair, and, and just in the general course of how these things work, not seeing this as um, being a ridiculous delay. Um, I understand the, the urgency on homeowners association, that's why I want to be clear, there's nothing that stops them from trying to do that at this stage with the developer. And I would encourage the developer to try to do that right now. And I think the solution for the zoning board could be that you offer a meeting if you want to, before the warrant closes, so that you can answer, if there's some sort of conditional vote that the, the planning board is willing to accept. And we'll have more work done by that point in time.
That's, that's fine by me. If there's, if it means increasing the chances of it, I don't have a problem with that. This is a date that works for everybody.
So that would, that would be that the, um, we would submit to the planning board all the documents they require. Then they may send back a message saying, we really need this language from the ZVA. And that would give the ZVA a chance to give them that language before the warrant closes.
Right. Except that, and I, I'm not sure when the next planning meeting will be. I think it's the twenty-first of September. And this has to be published in the paper.
Yeah, that's how that, that far out.
To, yes, am I right?
We, the next meeting is.
We have, we have everything we need to be on their agenda for the twenty-first, except for the town engineers and the signatures.
Yeah, well.
They may not accept it.
They may not accept it. However, when you have a, a vote acceptance, you have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
When you have a public hearing, you have to publish it in the paper two weeks prior. So now you have to publish it in the paper two weeks prior, which means it has to be in the paper. So their meeting's on the twenty-first, so it has to be in the paper September thirteenth and on September sixth, which is the day before Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
And then I spoke to the Gazette, which is where we publish. They need the dead, their deadline is Friday. So all of that has to be submitted before the September twenty-first meeting with the planning board.
Okay, right.
For the public hearing.
Yep.
But you don't have an answer from the public, from the planning board to do that.
Right.
To have the public hearing.
So they give an, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
They give an answer first to have a public hearing?
Well, see, the question is, is because you're, my understanding is that because you're requesting, if they'll do it, a conditional public hearing, because there are some items that aren't done yet, you don't have the town engineer sign-off yet, right?
Yes, but I, if I, so when would, so assuming the town engineers sign off, when would that need to be in to the planning board? Or maybe this is a discussion that we take place at the town, as opposed to here, yeah.
Yeah.
Both, yeah.
It sounds like, conditionally, I'm just talking out loud, um, but it sounds like what I'm hearing is that conditionally, if they were to do that, you would have to have all of the documents, including the sign-off, done before next Friday, whatever next Friday's date is, because that's when it has to go into the Gazette for publication. It's not a problem. So you would have to have everything completed and done.
You mean, you mean two days from now, Friday? You meant next Friday, right?
And that's what I'm trying to clarify with the Gazette, because when I had another publication that I actually had to do for that meeting.
Yeah.
I sent the publication to them and I said, it's due by Friday.
So which Friday, yeah.
And then when we were trying to figure this out.
Right.
I emailed them saying, did you mean this Friday or next Friday?
Yeah.
And they haven't gotten back.
Because restoration has, that's, that's a big difference.
Yeah. So it doesn't make sense to me.
So if it's next Friday.
No, it doesn't.
That I can answer for them.
Because of two weeks is, you know, the sixth and the seventh, which is a Wednesday.
Right, right. Right.
Or, or two, so the second.
Right, so you would want to have everything in by the first, which would be next Thursday, because the town hall here is also closed on Fridays.
Well, and possibly like the, not really the first, I don't know, how long you need to put a, how much time you need to prepare a publication.
Publications for road acceptance are easy. It's, I have a steeper program, I just have to plug in the actual.
So, but you, on the first?
So the.
You have the date.
So the thirty-first. So the hardest part would be actually probably the signatures.
Right.
At that point, yeah.
No, no.
That would be a little too long. I mean, the engineer, the town, the town building inspector sign off, if that's needed, is not the zoning board again. It is something, the zoning board also needs to issue its approval to release the bond.
But not the.
But it's not the only thing the zoning board should do itself. Again, if you are able to move forward with this, that's fine. It, it's um, the zoning board wants to look at scheduling a meeting for next week to be, in case the building inspector, the planning board says they need something, but I don't see us getting everything approved by next week. they need something, but I don't see us getting everything approved by next week either. There's still some legal documents and procedures that have to happen.
Just a, I'm works scheduled to see every.
So for the purposes of the road only, and you have the roads and the engineering reports signed off on and the work to be completed, really what you're looking at is next Wednesday, the 31st. Otherwise, it goes to October 4th. And then they would potentially have to be a placeholder for the warrant.
Yeah, and that's not the zoning, the zoning board is not.
No, I realize that. I realize, I was just throwing that out there.
That's something you'll have to.
That would have to be discussed by the planning board. And, and the towns, to see if they can hold a placeholder like that.
So what, when, when would be the soonest date we would be looking for a meeting possibly? In this next week?
We couldn't, to the planning board. To see what they would come back with. As homeowners, we couldn't.
My, my late day isn't until Saturday, so I'm free every night.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you want to create a meeting with an agenda item for zoning bridge states, in case the planning board does indicate they're going to need some type of approval or letter from the zoning board, you could meet, you could have that there, and then you could cancel it if the planning board says that something related to the zoning board is not necessary. I am not intimately familiar with the subdivision rules and regulations related to the process for road acceptance, so. And I think that that's a question that's being asked of the planning board. I'm not sure how it's going for the planning board, but, you know, you could create that. You could wait and discuss this with Carrie tomorrow, or you could, like, you know. I would suggest that you can, the vote tonight be that you continue it to, if you are going to do an interim meeting. And if that meeting is to be canceled, another meeting, so you don't have to meet just to.
Continue it.
Continue it for, because that would be, you know, frustrating, if it turns out you don't need it from the planning board.
Is there anybody on this board who would be, who would be, that any day not work for next week and a short notice, but if we.
Zach, the only question before you do that is, if the planning board does want something, then the zoning board is not going to know. They're not going to know until after the 21st.
They're not going to.
So, the earliest, the 21st is, I don't even know what that is, it's a Wednesday. So your zoning board would need to be, like, on a special meeting on the first day of the 22nd or something.
So, I'm sorry, I missed something, but I thought they were going to even accept it, to put it in a public hearing, until you had verification about whether or not something was needed from the zoning board.
Well, that would be a question. If, if they don't have the proper sign offs, I've already posed the question to the chairman. I did ask my chairman, I sent an email out to my chairman. I'm waiting to hear back from him, I haven't heard back from him at all. See if.
The zoning board is not part of the typical sign off meeting.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, and that's what, and there's nothing in the comprehensive permit that requires the release of the bond to take place before the request for the roadway to be accepted as public ways is made.
Right.
So, you know, and, and frankly, that would make sense to me, because if the developer weren't around, that's the idea of the bond. The town come in, finish, finish the development, and then some other entity would seek approval of that.
Right.
You would never get that final approval of the development, because you didn't have a developer asking for it.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So.
That makes sense.
Um, so. But I'm not, not the planning board's legal counsel, and I'm not intimately familiar with this process. I'm just trying to be creative in ways that you could.
This is nothing, I guess, yeah, I guess, the homeowner needing, or the applicant waiting, waiting, nothing for us to continue with that aspect of the discussion.
I don't think so, because, again, the planning board is meeting on September 21st. You guys are meeting the following day.
Which is after the warrant deadline. Unless the zoning board's scheduling a special meeting for like the 22nd, just in case there were any question marks.
No, not opposed to giving that. And we would just, I would just, council a meeting, they're working.
Yes, but that also means that as the developer, you're going to try and add everything that they need to them by next Wednesday.
Well, again, you, this is, that's a separate issue that I don't. I want to just be, they are, is a separate conversation between the developer and the homeowners, not relevant necessarily to this.
Would, and you have, would you ever be opposed to meeting back-to-back weeks, to try to get this something?
Not at all.
So what day is, what?
So the meeting, it'd be the 22nd of Thursday, would be the, the potential meeting if needed for zoning work?
I mean, or you just make that the next meeting you have, and you change your meeting, if it's an open meeting night for them, instead of having a meeting on the.
True, yeah, I mean, that's.
28, when do you, when do you typically, the 28th?
Would you, well, no, it's usually the last Wednesday.
Yeah, it would be the 28th. Yeah, so instead of having it the 28th, you give it up at the 22nd.
Yeah, I guess something why that would matter is if we had people trying to get, trying to get in applications for that meeting, that have, that would now push up each deadline, but if you're not meeting with anything.
Right, once this speech shut up.
And you, and you, if you, if you feel like pushing the regular meeting forward a week is not going to disrupt anything that's already trying to or on the agenda, we're here. Right, we need space. And we really would need someone to be filmed in.
Yeah, location is okay.
Okay.
So then I do have two follow-up questions for the ZBA, just since this is a little bit of changing subject since we have a game plan on that line. The first one is, I would ask the board, based on the engineer's report and my reports, to generate a number for the bond. Currently, I believe the bond is pretty high. I believe that the remaining items on the annuals are relatively small. So whether that be 10,000, some number that the bond is at at this point, I'm not opposed to leaving a bond. It seems a little attached to the whole, I think there's like 150,000 there, based on the items remaining. Maybe it's less than that one. Do a couple of these meetings. The second, second thing is, I would just like the board to keep in mind, there's a question about the reports and equitable actions and things like that. I'd like the board to just keep in mind, we have been a pretty good partner with the town. Compared to some other projects that have happened in, in the town. You know, we worked hard to make sure we had a couple of nice projects here. In this case, Flannery Ridge Estates, I think this one that we're pretty proud of. We did that at cost to ourselves, so the board has a copy of the cost certification. This project actually lost money. Brother, it's allowed to make up to 15% profit, he had a negative 2% profit margin on the subject. We did so, so while we could have come and sought financial hardships and things like that, we did not. Because our plan is to build a long-term relationship with the town. I would hope that, you know, again, with the state of the basins coming up as good and us not seeking to, nor, you know, being very quick to resolve any problems with those or anything else in the subdivision. I just would ask the board, keep that in mind, when they're thinking about equitable actions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that's, all right, thank you very much.
So perhaps what the board might want to do is see if, because of release, a further release of the bond, whatever's being held, maybe perhaps you could get an opinion from Mr. Williams, typically that's what you received, as to what would be an appropriate additional release, maybe insurance release, if it's really that high. And I, I don't know that I have that file, part of the file with me tonight, because I wasn't looking at it.
I thought it was either 104, 106,000.
No, no, I'm making that right.
I believe it's one of the two.
We can, I don't mind reaching out to have, or asking Carrie to reach out to him to see if there's something
If you can.
He could submit as a letter, and I can work with him as well.
Sure.
And I will be working on what's still remaining.
I think that's great.
To be done, and then we can figure out, you know, what would be an appropriate bond amount at this stage. I know there was supposed to be 10% retained until one year after final buildout, but we're past that stage, so. We'll want to have some funds still existing, so that you can get certain documents finalized.
Yep.
There's also the question, I think, that was brought up last week, just, I don't know if there's a resolution yet on the fencing.
Yeah, so, so we're still planning to rectify and bring the fencing plans with the. It'll be an open item that currently on the building inspected, but as far as my own concern.
Just out of curiosity, what were the things, the fire hydrants that were submitted? I couldn't like tell.
Oh, the, the small circles in front of the hydrant, all of those hydrants were raised last year. But the gate valve in front of them wasn't raised, which is the little basically to shut off for each hydrant. So all those, that was the last thing on the water department's list.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm just going back for a moment to the fencing.
Sure.
Could or should the homeowners have some say in what that looks like? So it's my understanding that there's a fence kit that would be installed on the four-foot fence to mitigate five-foot. I don't know what that looks like. I guess I would ask, is the common area owned by the HOA today? And if it is, if the developer is looking to make an improvement on land owned by the HOA, we're paying taxes on it, should the homeowners or the HOAs have some say in what that looks like? Aesthetically, I drive by it twice a day. Aesthetically, some 12-inch kit on top of a fence that is very un-sturdy today has no top crossbar, and now we're going to raise another foot. I'm concerned that aesthetically, it's going to look crappy. Those are large basins. There's a number of homeowners who look at that fence as their rare property line. So just a little bit concerned about a fence kit that might cost $1,000 to do 600 feet. My guess, or $2,000, my guess is the ball will be, is not there, so.
I guess that's why you're already on that though.
Yeah, if this is on homeowners association on land, then, you know, we may have some rates of action in that. It's also a requirement that the building inspector is insisting upon, so he's not going to sign off on it, which is something you need for road acceptance.
Yeah, and I think we just would like to be a partner in what that looks like. Not drive home after work morning, see this shoddy, you know, kit on top of a fence that is already, you know, in disrepair in some areas. I guess that's, no homeowner wants to be surprised by that. And I, you know, I never looked at a bunch of solutions, Owen, but is that really the permanent solution, is to install a 12-inch kit on top of the fence that is questionable to me today? So, and again, we're paying taxes on that land.
Yeah, so again, if you have a concern, it's, the building inspector is the one who has to sign off on it finally. And from a legal perspective, I need to make sure the fence is that height. From a visual aesthetic safe perspective, that's something with the building inspector probably. I would say that the building inspector, he may not sign off on it until it's done to the satisfaction of the homeowners, but if you don't have the sign off, that does, that is a requirement for you to ask for road acceptance. Can the comprehensive permit be modified to the current fencing? It can, there can be a mod, but that needs to go through a process, where we need to get a modification. We have a modification on tonight, that's what we requested.
And we should probably talk about that.
At the last meeting, not talk to the next agenda item. So there needs to be a submission to the zoning board. It would probably not show up until at the earliest the next meeting. And you wouldn't have the building inspector sign off until after that meeting, so. It's a, I mean, I'm just, I typically wouldn't have these types of conversations. It's just we're literally talking about days at this stage for you to have certain interests.
So I do have a modification prepared here, if the homeowners would like. That goes back to the four-foot fencing. This comes between, this is actually a question for the town, but they've been asking for the homeowners input of that. I created some language, if you don't mind me reading it. Modifying Condition 16, so the applicant shall be providing four-foot high block, vinyl chain clad chain link fence. So that's the same language that's in the permit now, except for four-foot instead of five. When I added the language, prior to release of bond, applicant will repair any damage to the fence regardless of cost and no cost to the homeowners association. Thereafter, maintenance of said fence will be the responsibility of the homeowners association. So right now, there is some damage to the fence in different places, caused by trees and, you know, other people climbing on it, animals climbing on it, that would normally fall under the homeowners association budget. What I'm offering to do is say, we will modify, you know, in, in place of raising the fence, we'll take care of all the repairs to the fence.
Okay, I mean, again, the conversation about what various options exist is appropriate tonight as part of the request for the release of the bond. The actual vote on modification isn't on your agenda, so if it were to be submitted, you would have to wait to vote.
The 21st, yeah.
So that is something that you can certainly consider. It might be something that the developer wants to talk to the homeowners association about separately and then file.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to sign this, but the question now is, is the board, is that acceptable to the board?
We can't.
We can't.
Because they can't.
Oh, you're right.
I'll sign this in front of them, and then we can, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes.
Yes, because it will go on for the 22nd.
And Mari, is it okay to discuss if you know it's not on your agenda?
It's okay to discuss the option, because that's a requirement of the comprehensive permit that has to be completed in order to issue bond approval. You just can't vote on modifications.
Okay.
That's not on your agenda. What is on your agenda is release of the bond, which is, have they complied with all the conditions? And if they haven't, then you would say to them, we need a modification request.
Okay.
So then you would say, okay, I'll file, and then you would, and then you would settle with the board.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay, so there is a modification request on, but I want to make sure, before you move on to that agenda item, you've addressed everything you want to on the request for the release of the bond.
I feel like we have to, do you guys have any more questions about anything that's discussed already?
I know.
All right, homeowners, you guys got anything? Wait, don't get me wrong, but the public's, sorry. All right, so we're good.
Yes. Okay, so I think you just need a motion to continue this to September 22nd, 7th.
Drive me in mind of what members are, plus myself.
Alice, Susan, you.
Elise. Great, so there's a motion, oh, wait, before I make the motion, are we going to 22nd, are we going to 22nd, that Thursday?
Everything seems good.
That's okay, right, I'm scheduled, yeah, okay.
Can I just, before, do you have the minutes left, just to make sure I have the members correct?
I reviewed them before I came here, so, yes, the Zach, Susan, and Elise, and then
Susan.
The other one, it was Zach, Greg, and Jonathan.
Okay, so Susan, this is, this was, yeah.
Um, do we want to vote on the modification press from last week, which is about the sign at the entrance way?
That has to be, that's the next agenda item.
Oh, well.
To continue this next meeting.
Your next agenda item is, uh.
But you need to still have that moving too.
So, so that, for your view, Susan.
Uh.
That's, this issue we just finished.
But the next agenda item is zoning, it's not, it's not this case.
No, there's.
Plus, did I have a?
It's B, part B of the business.
Isn't that it?
Semiridge and Semiridge.
But, like, that, that's so eight now.
Oh, so eight.
That's the, that's a, that's a tall cousin. Because we do, because we do have to discuss what, what B is, we do have to discuss, it's, it's obvious. Because before, when you're saying the next agenda item, so the next meeting. Because wait, when did he answer the next agenda? I was like, he's not the next agenda item, so I'm not sure why.
Sorry, I read it as.
My apologies, that was my error.
I think they can wait for a meeting, that's all right.
Yeah, we can, two of, we can have two of them next time.
Okay, all right. That's not even, that needs to be done through the second, right?
I don't believe so, I mean, it's again, it's. I don't believe so, I mean, it's again, it's subject to the board's final approval of the issuance of the bond, but it's, as long as the developer can work with the, the Carrie to just extend it further. This is a modification request. Um, when she gets out of writing, was asked to put it on the next meeting.
Okay. So we just, so we just need a, I need a motion, uh, to move, um, the discussion of Stone Bridge Homes Restoring Rite Estates regarding the release of the bond to our next meeting, which will be September twenty second. Is there a motion on the floor? Let's see, who are you member?
I think the motion to, um, respond that to September twenty second.
Continue.
Continue.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Okay, so that is moving on to that next meeting of September twenty second, which will be here, correct, Carrie?
Um, it looks like we can be at the old town hall.
Oh.
Yeah.
Alright, so we have.
Twenty second?
Twenty second, and, that is the old town hall, down. Alright, you guys are all set, unless you guys, I'm, 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 I'm. Did I give it? Alright, so we start with the, uh, set out before we get out, but. Oh, that, that is up. Oh, yeah, Carrie, do, it probably is moving on, yeah, yeah. It's just, it's just taking the order of like how we've got, it's like a, got to the last part.
Okay. Sorry, I missed reading. I, I'm all of the, oh, no, so.
Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item, which would be public hearing continued for the modification of comprehensive permit Stone Gate Landing LLC west of East Side of Somerset Ave, Route one thirty eight, so. This, they, oh, no, it wasn't Paul, it was his, their attorney, correct?
He was just, it was just his time.
Reached out, asking for a request to extend.
No, I think.
That's what you can say, well, originally, before they gave us that cor, that correspondence of this, could I know, so you guys go through. So they did ask Zach for the order to continue again, and I, I was like, I don't, and that's why we made the right email there, he's like, I think we made it, and I said that verbatim to Carrie at the phone, I said, I think we made it perfectly clear what the options were if things were not resolved by the next meeting. So why they were asking originally for a, the team was, is beyond me, but they have since provided more updated correspondence in which they are choosing to, um, withdraw without prejudice, but I will read that.
Yeah, basically, it was a two hour period.
Uh.
One minute, one minute, one minute.
Right, so this is the, right, so just so you guys know, so this would be, uh, correspondence, of course, is that correct today at one nineteen P M? Um, this is from Heidi, uh, Korea, I'm, I, I, I.
I guess she's their attorney.
She's known, you know. I mean, okay, thank you. Um, we are writing in regards to the scheduled ZVA hearing for tonight and requesting an extension until the next scheduled ZVA meeting. It's our standing, the past property tax issues has not been resolved. We would like to ask the board to reconsider and continue holding the ZVA meetings for the development as all of F Y twenty twenty two taxes the property hasn't paid in full. The underlying tax issues are from previous years and the board has suggested has not completed its research on that matter. We look forward to hearing from you. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Now, the next correspondence, is this post discussion with you, or did they just, they just follow it up? So then they sent, I, I, I have new correspondence at three fifteen, which was a little more than two hours later. We are writing again from Heidi today, we are writing on behalf of our clients, Stone Gate Landing LLC. We are on the agenda for the scheduled ZVA meeting tonight. We sent an email earlier asking to extend again, however, after my, uh, after discussion with our clients, they have decided to withdraw the application at this time without prejudice in the event they may proceed in the future. We'd like to thank the board for his patience, timing, understanding this matter, and in a political way. So one thing from the new members is that withdrawing without prejudice is where like, we're not going to hold anything accountable, so one thing that I was talking before they withdrew, I talked to Carrie today, and I was like, well, if we can't make someone withdraw their application, we can deny it, and then Carrie had, uh, Carrie had mentioned that Margery had possibly mentioned something about denying without prejudice, which I did not know was an option, which where we can deny, because I was saying to Carrie, what's stopping any applicant from applying for something, getting denied, and then next week just try again? Like, you know, and so, we would be denying something, that's a different procedure versus deny without prejudice, where we're saying, no, but in, is that, it's very much the idea of that. So that was going to be what I was going to suggest that we do tonight, for my opinion as a voting member, because what I was gonna suggest that we do, but they have since withdrawn their application with, uh, without prejudice, so we do need three voting members to vote to accept this, however, Greg was a voting member and he was not. He might hear tonight, so we do have to replace him, and I believe we have to, well, I believe we do have to replace him with someone who's been out of the meeting, which has been all of us. Um, I believe, you know, this meeting regarding this case, correct?
That is crazy.
Sue, I know you, it was late on Monday. But I, I, I'm talking, talking technically, I mean, I, because I just, I don't think it was involving any discussion with this that you missed.
Right. Right.
I found out that John isn't up, up to the point.
I don't, we actually, and you know what, at that meeting, she was late, we started with the other at first.
Hmm.
The other previous issue that we were just dealing with, we had that first anyway, so she was not.
Two in, had this stuff, alright, okay, so then we do, we do need a member gone, uh, for you to, um, assign to replace, right?
And who are the members that we had?
There's myself and, uh, Brad and you.
Alright, um, that one, I will ask, um, Elise.
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
Need to make a motion to, um,
Yep.
approve the substitution of ours.
Elise.
Elise, sorry, it is Vincent, okay, so. Elise Vincent as, um, voting member for Gregory Logan, and that Elise, we need to confirm that you've been present for all of the public hearing. And the continuations.
Is there? Just to speak, meanwhile, I'll step down as the chairman, so I can just make the motion myself that we, I make the motion that we accept Elise Vincent as the, so the two voting member for this case for Gregory Logan upon her approval that she has been at all of the meetings regarding this case. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Alright.
Right here. So, is it, I mean, I, there's no discussion, I mean, I, I, we can't discuss it, but there's nothing really need to discuss, there's some other extension there. They were drawing personally for me, I, if we hadn't gotten the second correspondence, I was gonna say.
We'll be.
I am not, I'm not going by email from their side, sending taxes in full.
Mister Chairman, just to, you know, to keep it clean, I guess, I will make a motion.
Really, please, we're on the one.
Okay.
You two get, um, this morning.
Morning.
Four, four weeks ago, or three, four, this is my fourth meeting, this is. You, here, June first?
Yes.
That's why we have our first meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
I think they came on, on the second. They come to this, my first meeting was at town.
Correct, the first meeting, they were, they were in, they were just, right. Um, but for me, I was not with, without any kind of.
I was, I was, I was gonna say.
That's the only time that you've seen Paul Cousins.
Oh, well, we have seen, uh, all the time, the, the case.
Yeah, I, I was.
So that's, uh, yes, I believe so.
Since, since we've been on. Cause I'm, I'm waiting to talk to that Jeff.
Yeah, okay, but as long as you were, I just wanted to go with John.
But you weren't back here for all meetings, but you were too.
Okay. And you can proceed as well.
Alright, thank you, so, and you know, I was not gonna take any mail from their side, sending taxes in full.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, when did we first have this on the agenda?
June first.
June first.
June first.
It's the June first, I don't know why I thought Paul was here. And then.
You have been here and withdrawn, but this, this particular request was first put on the agenda on June first to, the board opened, there ended up being some discussion, and then the board voted to continue, and then since then, there's just been votes to continue.
Okay, just wanna be clear.
That was the first meeting that we had without being on Zoom.
Right.
Yeah, that was the first in person.
Yes, it was.
Mm-hmm.
Where we actually got to meet.
In, in person.
Yes, that's right, yes.
It was, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't, it, I was not gonna go by email sending taxes in full, but anyways, you begin at there, I was, I was the kind of.
So Mister Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the letter of withdrawal from the office of Paul Cousins on behalf of Stone Gate Landing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Aye. Alright, done, done. Carrie, is there any additional public input? I'm sorry, I guess I made correspondence, I was, didn't have public input. Do we have any, any additional correspondence or anything?
He has the decision.
Oh, sign, yeah, I have it here. Um.
Sorry.
I assume you're more recorded aside from any, any correspondence or anything?
Nope, sorry.
No, good, uh, eh, the approval of the minutes next for the July thirteenth meeting twenty twenty two, is there a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes for July thirteen, twenty twenty two?
Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of July thirteen, twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Alright, is it before I adjourn, is there anything else you guys got to talk about, anything?
Press and gas is going down.
Yes.
This?
Sorry.
Well, I'm glad it hasn't been for time. You, you have to be quiet tonight, so it's getting something.
You did good.
You did good.
Charlie was a big boy.
But. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, cable.
Okay.
Yeah. Come on.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.